Welcome you all to the October 14th, 2025, meeting of the Albemarle County Planning Commission. And I'll read this, "The public can access and participate in the meeting through information posted on the Albemarle County website, specifically on the Planning Commission homepage and the Albemarle County calendar. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment on specific agenda items where input is invited." So with that, I will call us, I've called us to order and I will establish a quorum. Hey, we have the roll, please?
Nathan, can you mute, unmute and turn your camera on, please?
Yes, I can. I'm here.
Okay, there you go. Now we can start. Mr. Missile?
Here.
Mr. Karazana?
Here.
Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Claiborne?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Vivens?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Well, we need a motion to include Mr. Moore, correct, in the meeting?
That's correct. He can participate virtually since he's got an injury.
Great. Would anybody like to make that motion?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How much will you pay me, Nathan, to vote no?
With that, could we have the roll, please?
That ends the discussion period. Mr. Vivent?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Ms. Far?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, but Julian.
I voted. Thank you. Well, Counselor, you stated a reason, right? So I think we're good?
Yes.
Great. And I don't believe we have a consent agenda, do we? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let's get a public comment on matters pending before the commission first, and then we'll go to the consent agenda. So let's see, I have two folks who would like to speak, two items not listed on the agenda this evening. Benjamin Jackson, would you like to come up and speak? Thank you. You'll have three minutes to speak. And when the light turns yellow, you probably know, the light turns yellow, you'll have a minute left.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good evening. My name is Benjamin Jackson. I'm a resident of the Whitehall District, area code 22932. Thank you for being here and I appreciate the time and opportunity to voice my concerns. Fortunately, the data center ordinance amendment, the subject of my ordinance has been suspended. Unfortunately, all the comments I prepared were prior to that decision being made. Regardless, when this ordinance is taken up again, I'd like to offer the following. Pausing the ordinance is good, but a ban on data centers is better. The language found in the now suspended data center amendment conceded too much scope in the planning process to the data center developers, the sheer scale of the buildings which the data center amendment allows for alone deserved community input. Tier one buildings allowed for 125 square foot development by right, and for tier two, it was 500,000 square, 500,000 square feet, which roughly maths out to three acres and 12 acres of development, respectively. There are currently no federal legally binding energy standards that apply explicitly to the operation of data center buildings and infrastructure. And additionally, in Governor Youngkin's vetoing this past May of Senate Bill 1449 and House Bill 1601 titled "Data Centers Side Assessment for Energy Use, for High Energy Use Facility", the onus to regulate data centers in the Commonwealth is passed down to local governments, i.e. this board. Data centers as a whole are uniquely unregulated and represent an external threat to the communities in which they are built. By allowing this size of construction to be by right, the county is optionally giving up its ability to strictly scrutinize and perform discretionary review on an industry that would have major impact on the community in which it is constructed. There are multiple examples to be given regarding what the construction operation of such a large-scale data center could look like. The Google Data Center in the Dales, Oregon is a popular example. With initial construction finalized in 2006, that campus has ballooned in size over the 20 years it has existed, expanding to 350,000 square feet of data center and a 1.8 million square foot campus with four buildings in total. The campus used 104.3 million gallons of water in 2012 and confirmed 355.1 million gallons of water usage in 2021, representing greater than three times the use in a nine-year period. For comparison, that amount of water use accounts for more than a quarter of all water use in the Dales. This gross expansionism comes at the cost of the residents who take on the burden of a diminished utilities capacity and artificially inflated utility bills. Any tax benefits gained by the construction of this type of industry are immediately forfeited by the meteoric rise in costs residents will face as the data center steals power and water from community members. As of now, Dominion Energy is requesting a 6% monthly increase for residential users and is attempting to create a new rate class to address the strain large power users like data centers have on the Virginian Electric Grid. This proposed increase will not take effect until January of '26, with an average increase of $8.51 monthly for residential users. While this pause from the Board of Supervisors is a desirable outcome, Albemarle County Government should thoroughly consider the implementation of a ban on the construction of this type of industry. The data center industry and their respective big tech end users have already exploited our data.
You can finish this.
Their respective big tech end users have already exploited our data, removed online privacy, and now seek to steal our public utilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, what he said. I'm Stuart Overby. I'm with Samuel Miller and Samuel Miller District and with, Don't Spread On Me, we're a grassroots organization, working, advocating for change and how treated sewage sludge, aka bio solids, is permitted and spread on farmland and forest. So you all know that, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for keeping a nice, good sentence about bio solids in the AC44. It's a good start. And now that the comp plan process is almost done, I'm hopeful that we can make some progress on getting that bio solids ordinance, you know, adopted. So I wanted to make sure all you guys had a copy. I brought hard copies today to give you, everyone. And if you want a digital copy, I can do that. My email's in this cover letter, but I just didn't want to spread it far and wide because it's draft number one. Nobody's reviewed it and didn't want to cause confusion. So I'm just being a little careful with that. And yeah, I think that's it for now, but we have tons of information to share with you guys. Please check out the website and please review this and we'll talk again. Okay.
Thank you. And I don't think we have copies here. Oh, you're passing them out. All right, that concludes my list. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to matters pending before the commission, but not on the public hearing this evening? All right, if not, I'll move to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move chair.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All right, may we have the roll, please?
Mr. Vivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
I'll abstain since I was not present.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne? I'm sorry, Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm great, everybody.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Was that a "I"?
Yes.
I can't hear you. You're muted.
Well, yes, that was an "I".
Okay, I hear you. Not sure why.
Can you see that he's there?
Yep, I can see you.
Okay. My volume is going out okay. So "I", yes, "I".
No, "I", okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item five, the public hearings. And we will begin with AFD 2025-1. Staff, do you, will you be presenting these all at once, all three at once? Okay, so, and then we'll, we'll actually, we've done this before, is we'll have one public hearing for all three. So I'll open the public hearing for all three and then we'll close the public hearing for all three and we'll do that at the same time. So we'll begin with the one I mentioned, then we'll go to AFD 2025-2, and then we'll go to AFD 2025-3. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm James Van Franken. I'm a planner in the Conservation Program. As you've heard, we're here for the regular review of three agricultural and forestal districts, also known as AFDs. A quick background on the AFD program. It is a voluntary land conservation program in which landowners can apply to the board to join or create a district. Districts are reviewed on a regular cycle every four to 10 years. And during that review period, that is the only time landowners can withdraw from a district by right. And that's the review period we're in now for these three districts. The districts come with benefits to landowners and restrictions placed upon them. Some of the benefits include an extra layer of review for things like special use permits in or adjacent to the districts. And the districts can also be used to qualify for one category of the land use tax program. There's a common confusion, the AFD program and the land use tax program are completely separate. They are different programs. Most parcels in the land use program are not in AFDs. Many parcels in the AFD program are not in land use. But there is that one connection where being in an AFD can be used as a way to qualify for the open space category of land use. And we can answer more questions about that if you, if you have any later. The restrictions placed on landowners while they're in the districts are primarily twofold. First, they are not allowed to have home stays while they're in the district, so short-term rentals are not permitted. And the other thing that isn't permitted is using small lot development rights to subdivide. So again, as a quick reminder, I'm sure you're all familiar with this by now. The minimum lot size in rural areas is 21 acres. And in 1980, the board allocated to parcels the finite number of small lot development rights, which were exceptions to that 21-acre minimum. So parcels in an AFD are allowed to subdivide so long as parcel, the parcels they create are at least 21 acres. Parcels in an AFD are not allowed to use those small lot development rights. With one exception, one specific exception of family subdivisions is still permitted. So you can see the example on the screen here. A hypothetical parcel in the rural area, the maximum development potential in an AFD on the right, not in an AFD on the left. Now getting down to the reviews and how reviews work. Reviews are taken to the AFD Advisory Committee for its recommendation, then taken to the Planning Commission for your recommendation, and finally taken to the Board of Supervisors where they can act to renew, modify, or terminate these districts. And laid out specifically in the county code are five review criteria listed here. This is not an exhaustive list. The county code allows for any other relevant factors to be used, but these are the five that must be used. And of note here is in number seven, development rights. It says that it is the policy of the county not to include parcels without development rights in the AFDs. So you'll remember earlier this year, in February and December of last year, you saw another batch of these district reviews. There were 15 districts then up for review. And there were parcels that had been picked out and recommended for removal because they didn't have any development rights. This is the same process happening now for these three districts. And the board, back in the spring, decided to uphold this policy and removed those parcels from the districts. I'll now show you the three districts under review. The first one is the Green Mountain District. This is just north of Esmont, west of Route 20. It's our most recent district. It was created in 2015. It hasn't changed since then. We've received no withdrawal requests so far. You remember, this is the one time landowners can withdraw by right from a district. They have until the board's public hearing date on December 3rd to let us know. So we haven't heard any requests so far, but they may still come in. And all six of these parcels have development rights and so are not, and none are recommended for removal from the district. And both staff and the advisory committee recommend a 10-year renewal of the Green Mountain District. Second district, Nortonsville Local District. This one is a bit of an anomaly in the county. This is the only one that is technically a district of local importance instead of a district of statewide importance, which means there are slightly different criteria for creating the district. The minimum size of the district is smaller, 25 acres instead of 200 acres for the statewide districts. And some of the benefits listed earlier on don't apply to these local districts. But otherwise, it's the same, it's the same thing. The only other point is that the maximum review period is eight years instead of 10 years. So this district has two parcels, one of which doesn't have any development rights and so is recommended to be removed. And again, staff and the advisory committee recommended, you'll see, the eight-year renewal of this district with that one parcel in pink being removed from the district. And finally, we have the Batesville District. This is 33 parcels, just under 1,000 acres to the north and west of Batesville. Again, no withdrawal requests have been received so far. 18 parcels in the district have been identified as having no development rights. You'll see them here in pink and blue. The one parcel in blue is currently using the district to qualify for the open space land use tax category. And so if it were removed, to be removed immediately, those landowners would face rollback taxes. So under direction from the board, that parcel is being recommended to stay in the district for five years. Those landowners will be notified of this policy to give them time to adjust their tax status and not face rollback taxes. So that parcel in blue is recommended to stay in the district for five years. The parcels in pink are recommended to be removed. In this, that is, the staff recommendation is a five-year renewal with the pink parcels being removed. The AFD Advisory Committee recommended a five-year renewal, but with the pink parcels being kept in the district. And with that, I'll take any questions you have before we open it up for public hearing.
Thanks. Just one last, one quick question on that last comment you made on that last slide. The AFD committed to, voted to recommend renewal of the district without the self-recommended renewals.
Without removing the parcels.
Got it. All right, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I just have sort of a house, sort of not a housekeeping question, but just sort of a, sort of a process question. So, and I'm just going to refer to them as, as districts A, B, and C. Man, you know this year, because I don't feel like doing that. So on the renewal, you have 10 for A, eight for B, and five for C. And if you could just sort of generally share why there isn't a uniformed approach to, to that and why there's that variation? And how the variation is determined by the committee?
So the review period can be anywhere between four and 10 years. We've been trying to give these districts the maximum review period. So we were, we were trying to give them all the 10-year review period. In the case of Nortonsville Local, because it's a district of local importance, the maximum is eight. So that's where you get the Green Mountain is the maximum of 10. Nortonsville has the maximum of eight. For Batesville, because we have that one parcel in open space, it needs a five-year notification period. So that gives a five-year review period with the intention of, in five years, when it's reviewed again, it will move back to the 10-year review cycle.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Yeah. Yes, so you mentioned that the, the family subdivision was an exception to the utilization of the small parcel subdivision rights. So could you give me an idea about how many family subdivisions have we received since the 2016 policy? Do you have an idea, like annually, on average, like how many family subdivisions are we seeing?
I don't have that number. I'd welcome anyone else if they do have that number to come up, but I doubt we have it. We can find it for you.
I'm Scott Clark, Conservation Program Manager and Community Development. Just to clarify, that exception for family divisions is not really related to the 2016, 2017 policy change regarding inclusion of parcels. That's been true for the 30, 40 years the program's been in place. No, we don't have, as James said, we don't have an accounting of how many of those have happened right at hand. It's a small number. We don't see a lot of those. Family divisions come in, but we do track them when they, when they come in. But again, that's, that's a longstanding policy that's been there since the inception of the program.
I know there's a concern that when changes were made to the program in 2016, that more people might utilize family subdivisions. Or when, I know that when there's other changes that are made to, to, to the ag-forestal districts, that there's some concern that there'd be a shift towards using family subdivisions more. That's one of the reasons I was wondering.
We'd have to go back and do some research and find out.
If you have, if you can get me some numbers at some point in the future, that'd be great. I'd be interested to know just how many, I mean, not just in the ag-forestal districts, but overall, because it does provide a lot of exceptions to other policies as well, so.
Great. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Commissioner Murray, you done?
I have a question regarding the, the committee deliberations. And so I noticed on Green Mountain, that one, like it was unanimous, and on the subsequent two, so there were two dissenting votes. Can you provide any context from those committee meetings, what led to those dissenting votes? Anything that would be helpful for us to know as we deliberate?
Yes, so the advisory committee is split on this issue, but the majority of the committee members believe that parcels without development rights shouldn't be removed from the districts, that removing them from the districts erodes the value of the districts and that there is more reason to keep them in the districts than just restricting their development potential. So even though they're not restricted by being in a district, they are contributing to the overall kind of sense of community that the districts bring.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm going to go back on, 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 on on the record about how I find that's, I don't understand that issue, that a status of a piece of land is going to create whether or not you're in a community. Community is not a function of whether or not your land is X, Y, and Z. It may help to preserve, it may preserve, as my colleague has said. As my good colleague has said, it helps to preserve perhaps people being able to borrow a, a piece of equipment or something like that. So, so the idea of community being used in this, in this terminology makes, adds more weight to it in a broader, universal sense than I think it does in a functional sense. And so what I would ask is, once you have these conversations, is that they be a bit more particular in the language that they use in, in that. The other piece of this is that, on this piece that I, that I find quite interesting is that you have a group of individuals who refuse to accept what the supervisors have said.
Then again, Julian.
We have a couple of individuals on this, on this committee who are not in, who will not support what our supervisors have said. That's fine, but I want to be very clear about they are taking an opposite position of which is stated in the, as stated in code. And so, you know, my whole thing is I say to people, if you don't like it, then you should run for supervisor. And then you can change the code. But for you to be resistant to that feels, feels unnecessary, it feels like an unnecessary roadblock to me. But so, I, I've said this before, this is, no one's not hearing anything new from me, but I just feel, you know, since I won't be here for the next time you say this, I will say this on my, you know, my way out the door.
Thank you.
I do want to clarify, if I may, that it is eight out of 10 of the committee members who, who feel this way. I didn't want them to hear that it, it's only two of them. It's the majority of them who feel that way.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Farah.
Could you, could you get into the details a little bit for the scenario where someone's notified that in five years, we're going to be removing you whether you quit or not? And you said they have their opportunity, having been notified, to get their taxes in order. What, what would they be doing exactly? They would be socking up some extra money to pay the rollback taxes or what?
That's a good question. So landowners typically have three options potentially. They may be eligible for other land use categories. They may be able to qualify for agriculture or forestry. And our real estate office works with them to, to try to make that happen. If they're not eligible for another category, or if they're unwilling to qualify for another category, they are removed from open space this year and pay full fair market taxes on their property. Because paying fair market taxes for five years is, it means they're paying less money than they would if they pay five, five years of rollback taxes plus interest in five years' time. That makes sense. So it's financially sensible for them to, even though they can qualify for open space for another five years, it makes more sense for them to pay full taxes from now and avoid the rollback taxes when they are removed from a district. It is an option for them. If they choose to, they can say, no, I understand the situation. I'd like to keep this tax level now and pay the rollback taxes in five years.
Okay, I have two other questions. Well, there was, there was one parcel, I'm sorry, I, I can't remember if it was in the district around Batesville or which one, but it was a really small parcel, like two acres or something. I mean, why would we even have really small parcels within an AFD?
So until 2016, parcels were allowed to, and I believe in the early days of the program encouraged to join a district regardless of the size for the reasons of community that it.
Trying to create a more contiguous.
It's a more cohesive whole.
Okay.
And that all of the neighbors are coming together, whether you have two acres or 200 acres, you're coming together to preserve that.
So you might not necess, is it true then that you might not necessarily be a farm?
Right.
Okay, that's really weird. All right. Thanks for clarifying that. And then could you just sum up for us, just maybe in a sentence or two? Like if you were trying to pitch someone, like why would they join the district? I know you said community, but like, you know, today, with the new board's policy in place and all, not the new, not that the board is new, but the policy about division rights has not always been the case. So I guess, what would you say is the number one benefit, or why would someone, why would or should someone join a district?
So today, assuming that someone has development rights and is interested in joining a district, there, there are a few reasons why someone might choose to. One is to qualify for the open space tax rate. Oftentimes, the people I've been speaking to this year and last year are people who are in the agriculture or forestry categories of land use and the paperwork is just a bit too burdensome. And it's, it's slightly easier to just be a member of an AFD and qualify.
And automatically be qualified for that.
Right. They still have to revalidate, but I think it's just a simple, simple check rather than showing receipts or showing a harvest. There are a few other reasons. Some people really believe in the, the community aspect and are motivated by that and want to join their neighbors. Some people, I would think, feel like this is a good way for them to protect their land that they care about. They're not quite ready to do a conservation easement. They're not quite ready to do something permanent yet. But they don't want to see their land developed. And so they join a district kind of as a halfway step to, to sort of test the waters, as it were.
Okay, thanks. That was helpful.
And if I, if I could also just add, in, in the past, it was used as a way to stall development, that, that was contiguous with their, with the districts, with the district's boundaries.
Like a, like a bypass, for example?
Exactly. No, like two bypasses. Remember, there was a northern and a southern option that got put on the, put on ice.
Just a quick clarification. So the, the question Ms. Firehawk had about the small districts, you know, few acres, that changed in 2016, right?
Right. A two-acre parcel wouldn't be allowed to join a district.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Moore?
I don't have any additional questions. I don't have additional questions for staff. I've enjoyed the discussion so far.
Great. All right, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing? Yes.
Oh, you had, I'm sorry. I just want to follow up again on the, there's the blue parcel in the Batesville District that you said was an open. I just wanted to follow up again on the, there's the blue parcel in the Batesville district that you said was an open space. So is, is it planning on changing from open space to something else or just trying to qualify for open space? Can you talk a little bit more about that?
And so this parcel, I believe, cannot currently qualify for agriculture or forestry land use. And so I think if I'm remembering correctly, it will be changed back to, to fair market tax rate. Presumably at the next year, next financial year.
Okay, so, so it is going to be removed from the district?
No, it will still be in the district. It will still qualify for open space, but because it has changed to fair market tax rate in five years' time, when it is removed, it won't have to pay rollback taxes.
Okay, so, but it doesn't have any development rights?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm just looking at the criteria for, for open space now, and it says properties in Ag Forest District under open space agreement that have not yet been removed from these programs under new rules requiring development rights for inclusion will not be qualified in this program if they do not retain additional unused development rights. So it seems like we are postponing, removing this property, even though it doesn't have development rights. And it seems like the policy would suggest its removal.
And we're doing that because of the land use qualification.
Right. As part of the policy in 2018, the board directed us, but in this case, they didn't want to surprise landowners with rollback taxes. They wanted to give them a, a five-year warning period.
Okay.
Saying, here's the new policy. Here's some time to, to sort out your, your tax status.
Thank you. Yes?
Okay, so just to sum up, the, all of the, is it fair statement that all of the parcels that are slated for removal are all ones that don't have development rights? And that's the sole reason for their being on that list?
Yes.
And all the ones remaining in gray all have development rights and are all in some way protected by being in the AFD?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Good summary. All right. With that, I'll open up the public hearing and ask if there's anybody here who would like to speak to this matter. Okay, seeing no one in the audience, is there anyone online?
Sir.
Okay. And just to be clear, that was an opening of the public hearing for all three of these items and seeing no requests for comment, I will now close the public hearing for all three of those items and open it up to discussion. Anybody like to kick us off?
I'll just make the statement I always make that Julian so enjoys. I don't agree with the Board of Supervisors position that the only reason to have them in the district is if they have development rights. Because there are other reasons and to have farm uses be contiguous. What I find curious is that some of them are not farming or doing forestry. So, so, so it's odd. Because I've worked with other AFDs in other counties and they are farms, they are doing forestry. So it makes sense. So I, I feel like Almaral perhaps had some stranger, or let's say different reasons or processes for putting parcels in. And so I think we're trying to clean this up. But I mean, I am, I'm not, I'm not in support of the board's position on this. Having said that, I work for the Board of Supervisors and I uphold the ordinances of the county. So even, even having said that, I still would be in support of the recommendations for the removals because of it meeting county policy.
And I might suggest, and I've said this before, I think we, we may need some legislative fixes to this program as well, because I think there's some, some things that we would, some properties that I know the Natural Heritage Committee has long suggested should be included in AFDs, but they don't qualify. And those are properties that are currently enrolled in, you know, in conservation programs that, you know, and so I think it, it's a shame that these, this program can't be more narrowly tailored to encourage the kind of conservation programs that we want to see in Almaral County. Because then I think we'd get a lot more value out of it.
So are you, are you saying like a parcel, let's say that had a lot of conservation value, it couldn't be subdivided any further, but it was providing other values?
Correct. Like if they had, if they had documentation of things like, you know, fencing catalog of streams or, you know, being participating in pollinator habitat programs or other measurable conservation programs they're actively participating in. I would love to see that as a qualifying factor for being, for being this and getting open space. My understanding is that legislatively, we're not allowed to do that. But I think it's something that we should ask. I would love to see us ask if, you know, for the ability to include those properties, because I think that we would get a more measurable benefit out of this program.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously something that'd have to change at the state legislature's level.
True.
Okay.
Any other comments? Questions? No? All right. So as a matter of, I guess, process, do we, should we make a motion for each of the three? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm in since, you know, I'm over here. But no, I mean, I feel like this is one of those things where the board policy is fairly clear. You know, I, I saw this on the agenda tonight. It felt kind of perfunctory. We can, we can certainly weigh in and, and soapbox a little bit about what we think. I mean, I've been known to do that on other issues too, but I feel like this is sort of automatic, like the policy has been in place for some years and this is what we do. I, I do kind of, in, in the interest of soapboxing, I do kind of feel like what is this program really for, right? Like if it's for developing an agricultural economy, like how do we do that better? Because we, we, we are not developing strong farm economies in this county right now. Like we could with investment and, and training programs and supports and, and sort of like economic development, seeing rural areas as an economic development opportunity through, you know, ag, but I, I don't know that we're doing that. I don't know if this program is doing that. So I kind of wonder about those community benefits that we, that we saw listed on the slides earlier.
Good, good points. Thank you. I have one question. I don't want to open up a can of worms here. I was hesitant to ask this, but I know there's been, there's concern with the, the land value and how that's represented and how that impacts the county finances, right? Which is the, one of the reasons the board is pulling these that don't have development rights out is so that they can seek revenue from these that have been away from generating revenue because they've been in the Ag Forest district, right?
I believe, are you referring to the, the way land use tax affects the funding we get from the state?
Thank you.
That's an issue of conservation easements.
It's not this.
Not this program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
That's a separate.
Conservation easements, I understand land use and this do not impact the, the way the, the state sees the value of the land here.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
We do need to do them one at a time.
That was my question. Do we do all three or?
I think for clarity, it would be good to do one for each, a motion for each district.
Okay, let's start with AFD 2025 dash one, Green Mountain AFD review. Is there a motion?
A motion to accept the recommendations for the removals for AFD 2025 0001, Green Mountain AFD.
Second. Any further discussion? All right. Could we have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Vivins?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Clayburn?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Yeah, I, I. I'm trying to say yes and I, sorry.
Great. And let's move on to AFD 2025 dash two, Nortonsville Local AFD Review. Is there a motion?
Move. We accept the recommendations from the committee on AFD 2025 0002 and move those forward to the Board of Supervisors.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Clayburn, Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Clayburn?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Vivin?
Aye.
Awesome. And then AFD 2025 dash three, Batesville AFD Review. Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll do it since it's my district. I move to rec, to accept the recommendations for the removals in AFD 2025 0003, Batesville AFD.
There are a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, we have the roll, please?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Clayburn?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Vivin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. All right, we'll move on to ZMA 2025 dash six, HTC Area C. Good to see you, Mr. Newberry.
Right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name's JT Newberry. I'm a planner in the Department of Community Development. I'll be providing staff's presentation tonight on Hollymead Town Center, Area C, ZMA 2025, number six. I'd like to begin with a, an overview map. Area C is a section of Hollymead Town Center that's located behind the target on Route 29 North. It's comprised of nine blocks whose boundaries are outlined in red on this map. All nine blocks can be seen on the application plan, which is Attachment Five to the Staff Report. Six of these blocks are fully developed. And two are partially developed. And then finally, the two that we're going to discuss tonight are totally vacant and they're shown, they're shaded as blue on the, the map on the screen, Block Seven and Block Nine. A really high level overall summary of the proposal tonight is to increase the overall number of dwelling units in, in Area C by 40, and that would take them from 370 units to 410 units. Here's a look at the land use map from the Places 29 Master Plan. Block Seven and Nine are indicated by the, the yellow stars that are in the middle of the map. Both of these parcels are designated for commercial mixed use, which call for a primary use of, of retail and commercial service. Secondary uses would be residential, office, R and D, or flex space. At the time that the Places 29 Master Plan was adopted, the commercial mixed use designation was to recognize areas that were either developed or approved to be developed as shopping areas in places around centers. And the Places 29 Master Plan recognized that over time, there could be some eventual conversion of these areas to a more mixed use type of development beyond just retail. Something like residential or other non-retail uses that could support those adjacent centers. Here's a look at the zoning map. Again, the subject parcels have yellow stars on them. Both of the subject parcels are zone planned development mixed commercial or PDMC. That's the zoning district in the dark purple color on the map. Tonight's rezoning proposal doesn't propose to change the zoning district, but a rezoning is necessary to amend the Code of Development and the Propers. So to talk a little bit more about the specifics of, of this application, under the existing Code of Development, Block Seven has 100 units as a maximum that are permitted for development. And the proposal looks to reallocate 56 of those units from Block Seven to Block Nine. Block Nine would then be permitted for residential uses. And it would add those 40 units that I mentioned at the very beginning to give a total of 96 maximum units. The proposal would also reduce the minimum non-residential square footage from 20,000 square feet in Block Nine down to zero. It wouldn't remove the ability to do non-residential uses, but it would just remove the requirement of, of 20,000 square feet in that block. There are a number of other minor changes to the Code of Development that are summarized on Page Three of the Staff Report, but this is a, a high level overview of the proposal. An important part of staff's analysis is, is obviously for a residential rezoning related to affordable housing. And in short, this proposal meets the policy that would exist at the time of approval. So for those 56 units that are proposed to move from Block Seven to Block Nine, the proposal would be subject to our prior housing policy at the 15% level. And then the new 40 additional units would be subject to the Housing Almaral Policy, the 20% requirement. And so in conclusion, if staff finds that this proposal is consistent with the Places 29 Master Plan, it could result in additional affordable housing units being built. And so far, there have been no concerns identified at this time. That I can take questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? I'll start at this end.
No, it's pretty straightforward, I thought.
Yep. Ms. Carizana?
Just a quick question, a clarification back to the, to the 20%. And so there is no, the county can't, I know there's 56 that had fallen under the, but, but we are asking for a new, they're asking for a 20 zoning here. There's no leverage in terms of asking for the full 96 to be under the 20? It is a new.
That's not the way the county is being, you know, the policy is being implemented. We're trying to follow the policy. Obviously, there is a rezoning. There are multiple factors that can be considered. And you know, there may be, there may be other reasons why to increase or decrease that number.
Okay, so when you bring a, when you bring a a development back or any kind of changes, rezoning, or you're still grandfathered into whenever you, is that, I guess that's not the way I read the policy, but
Yeah.
It's grandfathered into whenever it came, it was first applied for? Even though you're changing? I mean, I'm.
The appropriate way maybe to look at it is rezonings are a change in usually increasing some sort of square footage for commercial use or increasing some residential above what was previously approved. So that's what we're focused on. And that's really what the change is, that we tend to look at it in a rezoning. So in this case, these extra units that we're, we're looking at and trying to apply the, the new policy to that.
I, I bring it up because, I mean, in this particular case, there's a lot of commercial, obviously, in that area. But we are being asked to eliminate the commercial requirement. So I'm just wondering if there wouldn't be a conversation where, maybe not in this one in particular, because there is so much commercial, but it's, we've been asked to do that in others where the commercial would potentially be a benefit. You know, and certainly in the coming years as, as that area develops. So anyway, just something to consider if there is some conversation in there or how we look at our policy, our housing or rural policy of, when they come back. If a, a site's been sitting there for 10 years, 20 years, hasn't been developed and now they're coming back with a new development, if there's some leverage to actually use a new policy instead of falling back on the old.
Of course, each rezoning has its own unique set of circumstances. I think you're connecting the commercial component of it or the, in this case, the removal, the minimum amount is a factor in and of itself. I think staff was mostly focused on just the housing part of it and weren't really like trying to assess whether the reducing of commercial square footage should somehow then equate to something that should apply to the older, the previously zoned dwelling units. So I mean, I guess what I tried to say at a certain point in my first statement was yeah, the policy works broadly speaking, the way we've applied it, but there are individual factors. the policy works broadly speaking the way we've applied it, but there are individual factors in each rezoning that I think need to be considered by the decision-makers, Plan Commission, the board, when they're looking at an individual rezoning.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great point. I understand what you're saying. One way, another way to look at it, kind of the extreme would be, I guess, if you had if you had housing that had, you know, a zoning or a parcel that had zoning on it, and a section of it was, say, it's a hundred dwelling units, and then they had the rest of it commercial, and they wanted to flip that to light industrial, but keep the hundred dwelling units, who wouldn't all of a sudden apply the new housing standard to that group, right, of existing residential? So it's kind of like that, but here you've got new residential that does get the new housing policy attached to it, I guess. Yeah.
And I'm, just to close it up, to make sure that staff, how we've been interpreting it, we're not like, at that point, I mean, I guess an argument could be made that the loss of the commercial, some, for some reason, necessitates more affordable housing to be brought in. I mean, I guess it could be some of the logic, but that was not the way we were looking at it.
Well, the applicant has the right to say, we're actually going to go higher than the county policy in terms of affordability, right? So they may still say that on the other units. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Vivin?
I do. I think staff can say whether or not we should wait on this, but I was trying to get a sense of the traffic, the revised or the traffic census that was done there. Will that take into consideration the impact of extending perk market? Maybe you'll tell me, like, you'll push back to me, like I said, that school's not going to be built for ten years, so why are we using those numbers today to say that extension's not going to be built in ten years? So why would we be concerned with the traffic would be there today?
The applicant may cover this in their presentation, but but the expectation is that the proposed, if residential uses were constructed there, that there would be less overall vehicle trips than if it developed non-residential.
And I would also follow on that the extension of that road is actually a current BDOT project that's funded that we're working on.
There goes my ten-year argument.
And I cannot tell you when it's supposed to start construction, but they're they're in the right-of-way phase, so they've moved considerably along in the design phase.
I have one other question. Chair, if I could, just some clarity. So I see we're doing something with setbacks on Page Three, we're sort of equalizing or changing some separate. Do you just have a sense of, in that area there, how those, how the proposed setbacks will compare to the existing properties that are built there? So the townhouses across the street, townhouses on this way, the apartments on that way, will it all sort of have a similar kind of feel to it as the closest to the sidewalks?
Yes, I expect so. Yep.
Great. Any other questions for?
Maybe this is a question for the applicant as well, but I'm trying to get a handle on the current state of pedestrian access in these areas, and what the sidewalks are like connecting some of these areas to the commercial area. Because particularly since there were some comments about that.
Yeah, so the code of development calls for sidewalks extensively throughout all of Area C, and the applicant may be able to give us more information, but at the community meeting, there was concerns raised, not only within Area C, but also across the streets of Forest Lakes. And so, you know, we've, we've made note of that desire to have some enhanced pedestrian connectivity between these centers across 29, and the sidewalks, you know, we, we could look at the Google Maps and kind of area view, but it will, it will effectively fill in and continue the predominant pattern of the provision of sidewalks throughout as adjacent to Timberwood and Burke Mar and onto Connor Drive to get into the shopping center area.
Are there crosswalks across 29 now? That you know of? Doesn't look like it.
In this particular area?
Yeah, didn't think so. Another bridge on its way, pedestrian bridge. All right, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore didn't have any.
Okay. Great, thank you. With that, we'll open up the public hearing and ask for the staff report. Sorry, the applicant's report.
Evening, everyone. I'm Dustin Schimpf, Schimpf and Steering. I am joined by Paulina and Dreva with my office, Paulina over there. And I am representing Post Office Land Trust, which is Dr. Hertz, a business who, by the way, I think turned ninety-seven this year, and has been still working away on things, including these, which he's been working on for probably twenty-five years now. So I will see if I can slide this up the top. I think the, you heard an excellent staff report that detailed the history and the specifics of this. I'm going to go through a short presentation here, a few other items to be aware of. I'll start just as a good sidewalk question. There are sort of missing sidewalks here because these haven't been developed yet. Basically, the code development required wide, ten-foot sidewalks and pretty stout pedestrian accommodations for the two thousand and three original zoning. So it was flocked through the county back then. Because these haven't been developed, they are missing gaps, but those will fill in when these are developed, basically. So that's the reason that is brought up, I think, for folks in the neighborhood. You're very near the site, of course. These are the last two, plus the parcel. There's a parcel across the street between Timberwood Boulevard and Connor that I think went up as commercial. There's been some site plans on that over time. I'm not involved in that one. The rest of the blocks have built out over time, with the exception of a small area as part of Block Three. This is the original, back in the time when this was done, this was how our application plans looked like. I think I worked on this, actually, early in my career. And so this was a overall drawing. You'll see the highlighted blocks there. There was this plan, and then a code of development along with it. Over time, just a quick little timeline for you, two thousand and three to two thousand and twenty-two, you can sort of see how things have built out. The, in the bottom-left corner of the first picture, that's Target is going in there. That was kind of the anchor to all of this, and then over time, Block C built out is predominantly residential with a hotel, and then, of course, you have a hotel in the front, and Block One is off the picture to the right there, is the Bojangles there is your commercial developments in that section. Here's some nice aerial views we found of what the neighborhood looks like now, and to answer the question was asked, the continuation were very similar there. The code development requires buildings ten feet and change off the sidewalks. You'll have a pretty urban street front on the build-out of these blocks, similar to what you see here, three- and four-story buildings are likely products. Summary of changes, this was going over it through the staff. I'll talk about the affordable housing for just a moment here. We're amending Seven and Nine. We're moving some housing because we have a site plan established for Block Seven now with forty-four units. So we are now developing a site plan for Block Nine and moving that density down that was approved previously. The policy has consistently been that the adoption of new policies, but even since when the affordable housing first came to effect, generally speaking, you started with whatever the baseline density you had was, or number of units. Additions to that were treated to the affordable housing policy, and that's been consistently carried on with the Housing Albemarle. I would add this one, in this situation, one of the downsides, going back and saying to developer, hey, we would like you to go back to your ninety-six you haven't built yet and make those more affordable, is incentivize you not to build more. Basically, if I had a choice, I'd say, well, maybe I'm better off than building fewer units, a larger, more expensive unit, to not cross that higher threshold of affordability. So it's something to consider. We're looking at going backwards, and it might create the opposite outcome you desire to have someone build fewer units, because if I had to zone it more and go backwards and change my affordable, what I already had, it may pencil simply to build less. So in this situation, we're following the zoning that has been in place with a fifteen percent, and then all the forty additional units will meet the twenty percent at the applicable affordable rates, the sixty, sixty percent AMI, eighty percent AMI for sale. The main change really is this table. It's an illustration of what we've adjusted and was brought up by the staff. I thought I'd show this. This is how it was outlined, the original code development. This table outlined what could be done in individual blocks, been amended several times over the years. And this latest amendment simply changed the items in red you see there to eliminate the requirement for commercial on Block Nine to allow residential. You see, previously it was not permitted. And to allow the ninety-six dwelling units. Those are the fundamental changes. The other changes were mostly to match, sex to code development with this change in the table. Of course, you all have spent a lot of time with the Albemarle County Forty-Four recently, which talks about the need for increased housing. I did not run the calculations on this, but one of the things I think you all have found over time is that these areas where the comprehensive plan might say a thirty-five dwelling units an acre, you're nowhere near that. And so this is because the pattern development, because you have a Harris Teeter, a Target that occupied fifteen, twenty acres of commercial land, you have to kind of make this density up elsewhere in the form of this higher density, these remaining parcels, to even approach the thirty-five dwelling units an acre. So this is an efficient land use coming into a spot like this and putting in some higher-density units. These will likely be some kind of condo building, which is a nice item. It gives somebody the ownership opportunity, but more affordable. When you get to this density we're talking about, that's the likely product, essentially. I have to bring up, because the county was very successful recently, I'm very pleased to hear about the Astra Zenica announcement. So the county, you all are aware, of course, just secured a very nice project, and that project, I don't know if I've seen the numbers of how many people it's going to employ. I'm sure it's a lot. And it's about three miles from this site. So one of the things that's been a constant issue in Albemarle, of course, you're familiar with this table, was it came from your Albemarle County Forty-Four report, was the number of folks who live outside of the county commuting in. And so creating these housing opportunities within such a close proximity to a number of employment opportunities, but particularly when the county has invested in, I think makes a lot of sense. So that's part of our interest to get this residential, we think it's a time to build this location. So that's all our presentation I wanted to cover. If there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
All right.
So one thing I noticed is that when I look at, you know, look around here, there's not much in the way of parks in this whole area. And I know this, you have a bunch of little tot lots and little parks scattered throughout here. And have you thought about just maybe combining all those little tot lots that aren't really particularly useful and making a more significant park out of that same acreage? Because I think that would be more useful.
That has come up, and I think that was a conversation we had with the staff, and then it comes to the community meeting also, and there's a there's a required tot lots of a certain size. I believe you have two left to build in this development. I think, staff, don't know if I'm wrong, but I think that there's an opportunity for them to make a determination that the two could be combined together and still meet the intent of the original zoning, basically. If they were, for example, side by side, like Block Seven and Block Nine, they could be combined to a little more useful space and still meet the code requirement. So I think that is the thought. It's efficient for us, too. So we haven't penciled that out exactly, but that topic has come up, and we have, unless we're told we can't do that for some reason, we probably would go down that road.
Well, and then if you could co-load it, co-locate with some bioretention stormwater facilities that are attractively designed, then you could possibly create a larger green space that's performing multiple functions, I think would have a lot more value. So, I mean, I would certainly advocate for that, and, you know, with staff as you look through. I'll have more questions, but I'll pass.
Okay. Mr. Vivin?
Good to see you this evening. So I'm glad you mentioned that you thought this would be much sort of condos, so I'm thinking of the condos there. Are those townhouses or are those multifamily condos? Or are they house? No, you can't, you can't do that, but we won't go into that. So what kind of, what are the structures that you're looking at putting on these two pieces? These two parcels?
It would, it would either be, there's a, there's a opportunity for like a traditional condo building, a thirty-two unit sort of building that's more like an apartment. But what you see commonly that's up about are these stacked townhomes. So it's a two, a four-story unit. And it has an owner on the first two floors and an owner on the second two floors.
Okay.
And that's the likely product here. It provides, you know, you have a garage, you have some parking. You also have your own, you know, unit, but it's in a, you know, a little smaller building form, more like a townhome, but it's a condo structure, four stories typically.
Could you share, if possible, sort of what your success has been in, in bringing, in bringing individuals or families who need to qualify for the affordable housing to those units that you've already done up there?
I've actually not been involved in a product with that two-over-two type. We did the project at Block Two, right across the street, and that had about, I think, twelve or so affordable townhomes that were built as, and marketed through that process. I, I kind of tended not to be involved once it gets to that side of the thing, but we did, we did create essentially I believe it was about ten or twelve affordable units right across the street, across Timberwood.
You believe that, you believe they were, they were actually, they went to market and stayed in the market in that way?
I know they would have gone to market for the affordable housing. There is the, under the old code, there was a provision where if it wasn't in a certain period of time.
You could go back.
I can't tell you for sure they all got occupied. I would certainly think, given how the market was in the past number of years, that folks flocked to them and bought them. I hope they did.
I'm going to say, I'm going to tell you that you can send to your, to Dr. Hurt what I've said to one of the other, one of your, your big competitor developers. It would be really interesting if you think about donating those units to the, to the land trust so that they could permanently, so they could stay permanently in, as affordable, as opposed to being in that springing. You don't want to deal with them for thirty years, and so to just get them off your books, take the tax deduction, and keep rolling on something else. You don't have to respond, Justin, but I just put it out there because I think that's a way to build the inventory of affordable, of affordable units that we do not have in this community.
Sure. We, I have done a number of projects where the land trust has been involved, and they may still be involved in something like this. They can, they have recently updated their model to allow a condo-type-two-unit structure like this. But I've run lots of projects where they've bought townhomes or been donated, and that is, that is an excellent path.
I have one other question about this, sir, Chair. So I understand that the decision to minimize the amount of commercial space that you have, and that you can still have it, but you're not obligated to have it. Do you have, do you have any sort of, we've talked about commercial space on the panel for a while here. Do you have anything that's giving you sort of any market sense about what's going on in our community as far as commercial space is concerned? That's helping you, that would, that would have driven you to that, to come before us and to request that change?
Sure. I mean, I, I have done so little retail in my business in the last five years or more, and the reason fundamentally is that there's enough space out there that you can't build a building and lease it to pay for it. And so because the market has basically not risen, the rate of rent and commercial for retail space has not risen the rate of home prices. So essentially, a builder can build a home for a good, it's a lot cheaper to build a townhome or a two-family dwelling is cheaper per square foot to build. So you can build that and sell it, but you could not build unless you had a very specific user, you wanted that spot, an owner-occupied user, a for-lease space there, because there's already a bunch of it down the Hollymead Block A, down by Cole. There's still empty space, been there for a long time. And so basically, you can't compete with that, building something new. So the market has driven that, you know, we all, I like to think in two thousand and three, I'm not sure I knew what Amazon was, you know, when I did this original plan, and now they come to my house every day. So we've changed our patterns over the twenty-five years, and that's just part of the change here, I think.
So, so I just want to follow up on that a little bit. So I, when I look at what I see as development being done really well, I have to look at Old Trail and what they're doing there. And, and they have gradually moved out their commercial spaces, and they have, they have residential up above some of the commercial that they're building now. And, but what's really good about the commercial they're doing is it's commercial that meets the needs of local residents. So it's really, it's really not, you know, big-box stores or things. It's really things that the people that live there will absolutely use. And so I realize maybe the market's not there yet because you don't have the people there yet. But, but I wonder if there's ways that you've considered creating spaces that are flexible, so that as it is built out, they could become commercial eventually, so that you don't build all this in residential and then then realize that later, there could have been a legitimate commercial need for small commercial retail for those people.
Sure. We have done projects. We did the, the building going up on Rio Road is in the Form Based Code. That's, we did that site plan, and that actually has the tall ceilings and sort of the convertible first-floor space. I think the issue with that, the reason those work in Old Trail is the ratio of people to businesses fits, right? And there is no target that you can walk to from your house in Old Trail to get what you want for cheap, and that helps, frankly, the smaller local businesses thrive in that. I think Old Trail is true for that reason. But here, you know, if you're trying to pop up a retail shop, that's a tough place to do business with all the competition around you. Essentially, the ratio is skewed far more commercial than residential, and so that ratio has to change a lot, I think, before those sort of businesses could pop. And not that it would happen someday, but I think we're pretty far off from that ratio in this particular site working. But I, Old Trail is terrific. It's a good model for how those things can work. Again, there's just a different ratio of people to businesses there, I think, is what works.
I just encourage, you know, we have to think about, you know, you know, Drilling, as mentioned, running Drilling, as mentioned, running out of space in our development area, right, you know, and And I think, you know, you know, if we're thinking only twenty years in advance and not thinking fifty years in advance, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice. I, I think that There will, as those, the number of people does increase, a- and I, I'm in full support of as many people as we want to put in there. Then I think that, that we're going to need a commercial and commercial that's walkable. That, that serves neighborhood functions, so.
Good. Commissioner Kozana?
All my questions have been answered.
You're all good? Okay, pretty straightforward. Commissioner Moore?
Uh, honestly, I think a lot of the other questions I had were also answered. I, I Uh, very much see the applicant's point that in the shadow of, of a target and What's now being dubbed one of our, our sort of destination centers in the AC forty four. You know, the, the demand for sort of additional commercial on the ground floor might be pretty soft. And also just echoing, I think, Commissioner Bibens's point, that, that maybe this is something that the Board of Supervisors can take up in the future, the notion of trying to develop a permanently affordable Uh, housing stock that would be frankly, kind of a secondary market for, for folks, but that's a little beyond the scope of this particular application.
Great, all right.
Can I ask one tangible question? I'm just curious, Mr. Schimpf, in terms of, you know, all the move to people working from home. And as you, as you, as these units are designed, are they being designed differently with like little office nooks, or is there Is there a different architecture going on because, because like I have staff that work from home two days a week? And live in apartments in Alamo County, I'm just kind of curious If that has affected the architecture of these.
We certainly see that, you know, a lot of these units are Two bedroom and often occupied by, you know, a couple or even a single person, and so that extra bedroom serves as that space. I think that is interesting, this is also a little tangential, but it's interesting to consider, I have looked at the traffic on this In all my career, basically, as we've changed zoning. If you were to look back now, I'm sure you'd find the build out was far less Traffic count than planned, because we did the original traffic study in two thousand and three, which was way before remote worked, related to your question. And we, you know, it was the assumption that everybody would travel out four different times to four different retail shops to get this, so When the traffic study was done, the proffers were based on those numbers. And so there certainly have been times probably when the county did not get As much as they might have liked, but probably if you went backwards because the traffic has actually decreased From the projected build out, essentially because the residential versus commercial. The, the impacts probably were in the day, would be perhaps Over calculated, and turn lanes were built, money that was paid and so forth, so that's not here or there now, but it's related to this sort of change, and we saw From twenty nineteen to twenty, I guess twenty three, BDOT's latest numbers, the traffic stayed about flat.
Yeah.
So what happened is during the COVID era, traffic projections count started to go down. And then started to have this now peaked back up to the same as they were, so those patterns you mentioned have We see that in our data, in fact, VDOT will not let us use data from the kind of the COVID era peak Work from home because it's skewed.
Right.
Because of that.
Though while we're being tangential, why, why do you think we're seeing so much congestion on the roads today here in Alamo County? If it seems like it's been, you didn't say that it was universal, that everybody was over calculating their Need for improvements, but it seems like The opposite effect is occurring.
I think that what I would say is that, you know The, the calculation based on any given like number of projected, you know, businesses might be less, but you still have many more businesses here, many more people here. You know, the growth is always going to lead to more traffic. You know, and so What I would think is, and this is speculating a little bit, but that was math. But if I went backwards and I said, hey, if I assume Two thousand Five way of living, right, all drive to retail, we're not work from home, we don't have Amazon delivering stuff to us. Then you would project way higher traffic counts based on the number of people and businesses are here than what actually are, so sort of the The growth continues, but I would speculate that the trend in increased traffic per sort of user here Is a curve that flattens a little bit rather than holds straight.
Just interesting that with all of that, all of those things that you mentioned, Amazon delivering People working from home, et cetera, et cetera, the, the volume of traffic on the roads seems to have increased beyond
Absolutely.
Capacity those roads were built for and the proffers were able to handle.
Right, and that's sort of the case in some places, I think the case of this, the, the proffers were set about the impacts of the individual development. So when other people develop around.
Background traffic.
When Green County puts in a thousand new houses, people who commute to Alamo County, that's, that's, that's traffic.
Yeah, but you had to make assumptions based on background traffic that were also projections in some cases, which were probably projected high. Yeah, it's just interesting to me, I'd
But Chair, if you can sort of think about that, I mean, that, then, then in essence goes to some of the conversations we've had here. Part of it is, we can do projections in Alamo County That That work within our boundaries. But will not work within the city's boundaries. And so all of a sudden, you've got these two infra, two sets of, I'm going to leave Green, Green County out of it, but you've got this infrastructure between two jurisdictions That in no way mesh up to each other. So it's like me trying to take a European plug and put it into a US thing and say, well, it's still electricity, but no, it's not, you need, you You need to put sort of the translator in or the, the, the adapter in there, and I think that's fundamentally the issue we're seeing. When you look at that, the, that the main arteries that connect these two jurisdictions, we can go to Green at a point. Were never anticipated to flow in a way that they optimize the flow of traffic. You'll recall, and you were in something, some other people were in here, that the city did not uphold its part of the deal To have its traffic lights in sync with everybody else. So all of a sudden, even if the road's good, even if the road's good, you still have an infrastructure issue that prevents The flow of traffic in a way that's meaningful or a way that's a sort of facilitates the traffic.
Yeah.
And that goes back to my, my old bugaboo, that that's not going to be solved Until there's a rethinking about what these two jurisdictions mean to each other. In the same way that people have talked about, have talked about transit, we're not going to make any significant changes Or enhancements to the way we move people around, because we don't, there's no handshake there. There's no handshake in how we think about that as a unified, even throwing in the, the institution down the road. The institution in its own transportation thinking does not enter into the secret handshake with the other two jurisdictions. I think that's probably what, what is really sort of pushing us in some ways.
I mean, before you go on, let me just, are you going to direct questions to the applicant? You are, okay.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, you know, but, but speaking of integrated travel and, and coordinated planning, I mean, one of the things that I find instructive too, when you look at this site, despite it be calling Being called a town center. It's, you know, when I pull this up, the Strava heat map for this. So for those who don't know what the Strava heat map is, it, it, you know, it records data for walking, running, cycling, all pedestrian traffic. And so you can see, you know, where people actually are walking and, and running, you know, and I can't really show this to To the audience, but feel free to look it up later. It's amazing how dark That commercial area is. And how many dark areas there are, and you know, where you're crossing the road, where it's dark, where there's really not any pedestrian travel at all. And so when you're thinking about How people would like to move and where they're not moving, I encourage you to use the data that's out there for, for pedestrians. Because it is, it is kind of shocking that something called a, a town center Has such little pedestrian traffic.
Is that reliable for, I mean, do you have to be like a Strava member to have it?
No, you, you, they consume data from a lot of different places.
Do they?
And there's, and yeah, and there's, and there's also data. You, there's also street light, so one of the things If you carry around one of these guys in your pocket. The, the data from this is anonymized. And, and has been available for, you know, they can sort of tell by The speed at which you were moving with your cell phone, whether you're walking or whether you're You know, so there's data that's out there about pedestrian travel that can sort of Figure out, you know, where, where people are going.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, is there anyone online? All right, well with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Anybody like to open us up?
Well, I'm glad to see more housing density coming in, and I do agree that because this area is surrounded by so much commercial. It, it doesn't really make sense to try to force the applicant to Try to fit some commercial here when there isn't market demand for it. It's been sitting there for a reason. Not that it hasn't been available.
But, but I would say not yet, I mean, if you look at, you know, if you go to Short Pump or you go to other places where there's been, you know The same, you know, I, I think of Short Pump is sort of like what, in some ways, what place is twenty nine unfortunately aims to be, and both good and bad. And, and you do see, you know, a lot of commerce, you see, you know, a lot more commercial there, a lot, you know. I, I think in the future, as we increase the population, I think the, the potential for commercial to be viable there Is there, and so we don't, I think writing off huge areas of the development areas, just residential only is, is Is a problem unless we, it was adaptable.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to the applicant's comments too, like what is the percentage, what is from a marketing standpoint, what is a percentage of residential, commercial, retail, support? Those percentages have changed, you know, and what you're actually seeing is We're heading more towards the residential because people are mail ordering everything in. And less towards actual support commercial that is then walkable. So your people are staying in their homes more. And, yeah, it's interesting to see. It'd be interesting to know that percentage and what that percentage is like now versus what it was like in two thousand and five. And also What that meant for traffic generation and if Like the, the Institute of Traffic Engineers manual is being revised To accommodate what's been shown in, you know, the recent realities, I guess.
Yeah, I would just say, just along, along the lines of what you all were discussing, I think the term mixed use Probably just take on a different term, right, like I would imagine If a daycare was part of that commercial, probably wouldn't have a, just from my experience, I feel like everybody needs childcare, so That probably would fill up, right, or Does coworking start to be the ground floor space now, right, like I think it's just a different way of looking at it, it's no longer You know, the little coffee shop maybe, or, you know, Domino's Pizza or anything like that, it might just Take a different form, but in terms of this proposal, I'm in full support Based off of what's been justified, so.
Yeah, just to, just to build on that, and, and To Lonnie's point as well, there are certain areas of the county That as we look into the future Are probably going to be very conducive to have that mixed use. That they have density, so you're going to want the smaller shops. One, it encourages small business, which I think hopefully we want to do. And, you know, when you look at these big companies that are coming to Alamo County The people that want to live around those, that want to have access to services, yes, we have a target, yes, there's a few things there now. But there's not really a lot. And there's a lot, there's opportunities, and if we fill it all with houses and we run the risk of just Building bedroom communities everywhere, right? Which you can see example after example after example All over the place, certainly in California, and, and we just build these bedroom communities and they don't have access. We do have good examples of, of where we've done that well, I think Old Trail is You know, it's working towards there, there is some commercials, probably not a lot, but there's some. And of course, in Croze, they have access to commercial not too far Away, but North twenty nine, there's not a lot, and we're building all these communities. So I, I do think that we need to keep in mind of that, that just eliminating commercial because right now is not viable. We lose the opportunity in the future. So I think we need to be cautious about that.
We've talked about having like some mini kind of seminars for the planning commission, one interesting one I think would be market. The market and just understanding Kind of the local market, but the like regional and national markets and what we're seeing in terms of that kind of thing.
And you know, Chair, I was going to bring that up, I was going to bring just that point up later, because in town we have Coal Star.
Yeah.
And, and that is in fact, the leading sort of group that does analysis around commercial buildings and things like that, and so Since, since there's a group here that does that, it would be interesting if, I don't know if the county has a Has access to them, but I would hope that either them or the economic development, that would be someone that you'd want to just have discuss What's going on in, in communities like this. That is not like, like, like the Richmond suburbs, that has sort of, that has sort of the ability to attract sort of really big box stores. You know, sort of what I would call hyper regional stores, I don't believe we'll have that kind of, that kind of economics here. And then sort of talk about what does that look like for, well, what does that look like for communities with the sort of business mix that we're starting to see around here?
Stonefield, I guess, would be another option or another example. Where they've added the residential to.
So think about, think about what happened in Stonefield, Lonnie's been off and talking, that was supposed to be a multi-story.
Huge missed opportunity.
That was supposed to be a multi-story, and the economy, the economy knocked it out, and so I think what we're also looking at That I think we also need to keep in mind is that investors come here, are going to have a different risk portfolio than one that might go to Richmond. Okay, so we do have a bit of a, a bit of, a bit of a change with the Gray Star. That that is in fact, an international company that came here and at the right time decided to take the risk on that piece of property on Old Ivory Road. We had something like that perhaps going to go over on near where K-Tech is, and then they got tired of having people yell at them and said, I can go do this someplace else. And so I think when we look at what, what, you know, you're, you're asking someone to do a couple of things. We, and we see this, so they've closed the Krogers. Okay, took a Krogers out. They're closing Starbucks, they closed the Starbucks at, at whatever that, Hollymeat is closed, I think there's some other Starbucks. So, so that there are, there are decisions that are starting to be made because of our market.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And how our market actually sits at a, at a, at a, at a sort of national level for national chains. Now, I think what, what, what Louisa said, then the economics is different for a local For, for a local vendor to come in and do commercial, we saw something, I don't know if any of you saw that, the Mud House is celebrating some big, some big, some big years being on the downtown mall. Which that started from a push cart.
Yeah.
So it started from a push cart on the, on the corner, and it's so, we may see that sort of, we may see those Those, those sprouts of commerce that come with a different risk profile. But I think we're going to be hard pressed to see that, to sort of replicate what's happening on the outskirts of Richmond.
And to be fair, I'm not so sure we should.
I know that, I know that, I know, I know, I know that, but, but you, but you have a good point, if you go to the side where the Whole Foods is and the, and the Trader, now Trader, yeah, Trader Joe's, that whole area back there works. Because they can walk over, they can walk to the gym, I think there's an AC AC over there, there's lots of restaurants on that side of the street. If you look at the other side of the street where the Nordstrom's was, it's not there anymore for some obvious reason. They don't have as much housing over there, they do, but it's, it's up the street where it's, it's, it's all by itself. So the whole idea, how you integrate housing Solutions to, to commercial solutions, and also you have a bunch of people who have higher incomes. That sort of will tell you the mix of things that we have here, and I think our mix of incomes like that are dispersed across the county, which we've all sort of talked about, they're not They're not in one single jurisdiction that's going to be able to sort of sustain that kind of, of those kind of national, national businesses.
Well, I mean, I think one of the things that concerns me too, is that, you know, we, we've had people come here before and they say that There's a problem with, and I don't have experience building buildings, but my understanding But the, but that there's a big problem with adaptability, right, if you build something as an office building, it doesn't, it doesn't lend itself to becoming apartments later. Or it doesn't lend itself to becoming a restaurant later. But you can design things in such a way so that they are more adaptable in future, if you plan from the beginning. And I just, I don't know what we can do in terms of our design standards or what we are doing in terms of our design standards To make sure that When the market changes again in twenty years, that we're ready for it, and there's, we're not stuck with a use that doesn't make sense anymore.
Oh, great comments. Any other discussion? Nathan, more?
Thanks, I would just add that, kind of plus one, the, the notion of bringing in some market study presentation folks for us. I feel like we have a lot of conversations sometimes On vibes. And, you know, but kind of back to my old, old SimCity days, you know, I feel like the demand for housing is very high, the demand for light industrial is very high. Everything I am hearing from developers coming for rezonings or for, you know, project changes, or even just seeing commercial properties on the market Shows that commercial demand is pretty soft right now, and so I think That's again, though, my own vibes. I think we would do really well for some data to kind of better understand that and, and see what we can do to, to build the neighborhoods and communities.
Great, thanks, any other discussion? All right, if not, would anybody like to make a motion?
Chair, I, I move to recommend approval of ZMA twenty twenty five zero 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 six Hollymeat Town Center Area C for the reasons stated in the staff report and discussed at the DIAS.
All right, do we have a second?
Right. Do we have a second, second? Other discussion? All right. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Say this again. Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Carizana?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to committee reports. Any commissioners have any reports to share?
I do. So the Crozay, the Crozay CAC met, and I believe you have what that meeting was about because they sent you the resolution that was the result of that meeting. So I hope everyone read it. If you have questions about that resolution, then let me know.
Great. Thank you. Any other committee reports? There was a, a large CAC gathering, right, at the end of this month? There was a combined CAC coming up because ours was canceled.
I think it's November, but I, I've heard, I was talking about that, but I've forgotten the date.
Okay.
Also, will the clerks send that to us?
Notice of that meeting?
Or just a calendar invite like we do for these meetings? That'd be helpful.
Would you like that? We'd be happy to send that.
That'd be awesome for me.
Okay, we'll do.
Yeah, I think that that would be good. I gotta be spoon fed. Thank you. I think that's.
All right, awesome. Thank you, everybody. Review of the Board of Supervisors meeting, October 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you recall, this was a work session to work on the conference plan. The board had held one on September 10th that ran long, and they were unable to finish a couple of the chapters that they were in the document. Staff worked with some of the, you know, with the board, sort of to try and fold in some of the concerns that were, you know, people were voicing in those latter two chapters to create a document that we presented to you all on September 30th as the final draft. With an understanding we were going to go back the following day, the first, to look at the, um, those last two chapters, to make sure that everything we'd sort of gathered from comments and them were, were correct. We ended up with a very long conversation about multiple things with board again. And broadly speaking, the, the major stuff, I, I know, I received an email from you asking for me to talk about what are all the changes? The, the board's packet that they'll be considering tomorrow night has an attachment with four pages of, of, of changes. So I would encourage you to, if you want, we could pull that up and talk about it now, but I've been broadly speaking, those changes were updating language regarding the potential criteria for assessing the development areas. They were changing the future land use map to, to show the sweet, sweet spot property, the properties sort of next to the sea zoning that we considered, what was that, last month? To change that from an industrial designation to, or was it heavy industrial designation to a light industrial office flex.
Which is different than what the applicant came to us asking for, right?
Right.
It's a step, it's a step.
Actually, actually, to be clear, they came to you asking for it to be community mixed use.
Right.
The board, you know, heard your all's input about process, and we're also listening to the, to the property owner who was talking about the difficulty of, of getting tenants and, you know, interested party, interested parties to develop the property as industrial. And at one point during the meeting, Supervisor McKeel put forth a, a motion because there was a lot of talk on the board about what they might take or they might want the housing and, and, you know, all these issues that you all wrestled with. And she spoke to this particular parcel and said, well, how about we make this that light industrial mixed office flex use designation that's our comp plan? And so they acted on that at the board to, to change that parcels designation. They updated and clarified housing data and added several other housing-related actions. I know that was one of the things that were coming from you all talking about that. There's a clarification that the big moves are not in a priority order. I think the idea that we're not trying to, like, I keep sort of talking about this with my staff, we need to move on multiple fronts to, to beat the challenges and the changes that are going to come over the next 20-year planning horizon. And so it's not just one thing we need to do first. It's multiple things we need to do. Um, and then finally, they incorporated many of the recommendations that you all had provided. Again, it's attachment A in the board packet, be happy to send that to you all. Really detailed a lot of the, the changes that have been made.
That's a summary of changes that are made in the version of the plan that they will vote on tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they're all in there?
Yeah, it is a lot of, you know, it's kind of like it's a compendium of stuff that was, you know, you all gave a recommendation of approval with some of the changes that you wanted, so that's in that list. And then there's also combined some of the ones that the board had made on October 1st.
So that they all know these are all the changes and they're in the document?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Can you elaborate a little bit on changes that might have occurred that allow the applicant to make their own changes to the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, you're talking about the citizen-initiated conference plan amendment.
Yes.
Okay, to be clear, only thing the compliance says right now is we should look at doing something about that.
Okay.
It doesn't actually change that process, and the process is probably something I wouldn't recommend to be detailing out in a comp plan anyhow. It's a, it's a policy type of a document change.
Sure.
So one of the things we want to do at the staff level, we're working, you know, you'll have to understand, we've been very busy trying to write a plan. It's been a busy year for us. I'd say that lightly. And so what are the exact, you know, steps that we're going to be doing for an implementation? We haven't sort of drilled down all, all those changes that we want to bring to you all in the next several months, sort of talk about what, how we're going to implement AC44. Uh, with that said, we have been spending a lot of time thinking broadly about what they need to be and identifying initiatives because, you know, we're, we're quite frankly excited about the, the next chapter of doing this implementation. So one of the things we recognize we need to do is work on some, a series of processes within the, you know, Community Development Department zoning modernization and other things. And one of these things is this citizen-initiated conference of plan amendment. We had an opportunity in a meeting this morning to talk a little bit more about what, what we want to do. We want to try and roll that out sooner rather than later. For the reasons I've stated before, it does seem to make sense that if we're, the time to change the, the land use designations is during the master planning process, and we can't, you know, do that in a frequently enough manner to meet changing market needs. We should create something like that. We also need to balance that against conference plan amendments that are sort of really sort of wildly impractical. I don't quite know what do I term is there. So we're, we're looking at those processes, and we'll try and bring that back to, to the board and to you all in short order.
And citizens initiated comprehensive plan amendments pre, did exist at one point, correct?
They did exist. I, you know, it's funny, we were talking about, you know, this thing with, the chef was talking about.
Yeah.
You know, I was the young Padawan planner.
Yeah.
Was doing that rezoning, and that came out of a citizen-initiated conference. And it was interesting because they wanted to do one thing on one parcel. I, I think it was actually a movie theater that was on the place we just considered tonight. So talk, talk about how things change, right?
Yeah.
And that sort of created this idea of wanting to do a conference of plan amendment because it was industrially zoned land. And that led into something, we, with that one, it was a big enough change. The county wanted to look at, like, all, there were four developers in that area, and we wanted to look at it more holistically. And that's why we weren't willing to do a zoning amendment on one individual parcel, not looking at the bigger area. So that's a good example of how, what they used to do, and we sort of, in that process, we did the conference of plan amendment, and then we came back and did the rezonings for that particular area. We, there's a lot of nuance, and I'm not really prepared to get into all of it tonight, but we want to try and come back with a good, flexible process that can meet a multitude of needs.
Good. Just a little bit more clarity around this question that's been out there. We, we've seen, you know, some emails and around this, a mechanism that's being developed, maybe this is what you're alluding to, but I, I don't think it's clear, that would allow the, the development area to, to annex properties. So can you talk about that? Is that being incorporated into the AC44 tomorrow? Or is that something that you're going to be developing?
So to be clear, this idea of a citizen-initiated comprehensive plan amendment, that could be multitude of things, right? It could be a change of designation of a piece of property from one land use to another. It could be, you know, some of these maximum densities that we have in some of these land use categories. It could be changing text there. I mean, the conference of plan document is 200 pages, so in theory, it could be anything. Certainly, growth management policy is part of that. And we've tried to put criteria into the document to talk about why we would expand, the factors considered to expand and potential factors to consider to, to reduce the area. But the goal of the, the, the citizen-initiated conference of plan amendment is, I, I feel it's mostly driven towards land use designations and not so much. But I guess boundary adjustments could be. I remember, I'm having a hard time giving you an exact answer, but we did.
I mean, it, it, it does seem that's exactly what it would be used for, right?
Yeah, it could be.
That would be the, the, the gist of it because there's, that's the whole debate. Right? And so we kind of struck the balance. So it does just seem like an odd way of, and we didn't, we didn't go through that policy here. It didn't come through us. We didn't discuss it and debate it, and certainly the community didn't have an opportunity to go through that. So I guess my question still remains, so that's being incorporated in what they're voting on tomorrow? That policy or that, that language to then allow that to happen in the, in the AC44?
Right, and so I, I would just, I would just say that there's a different, two different things. The process that would happen post-adoption, somebody coming in or asking for amendment of the plan is separate from what you're talking about, this idea of enlargements or reductions in the growth area, which is, was something that was the board asked to include into the plan, and that's why it's, it's there.
Right, and that's a change from what we saw. So it wasn't in our, so that's going to be outlined in, in the information that you send us as one of the items that was a change.
The things that are in the staff report that's going to the board are things that changed September 30th. The, the aspect of this policy you're talking about, the growth management, that's been in there for months.
Yeah.
So that, those changes, I mean, there are some little changes to it. You guys recommended some language change, and we talked about this. But I'm, I'm, maybe I'm missing your question. Are you asking, are we adding it whole cloth or we, you know?
Yes, but it, it's the language and the mechanism that's now being added. Because that wasn't, I mean, that wasn't there when we reviewed it. There was the idea of.
You recall, you did review it. We talked about it. At least at the last meeting, if not the previous one, we, you talked about wanting to, I think we had the discussion about the robust public participation. So we did, we did talk about it with you all.
Sweet, that was a sweet spot conversation.
No, no, there's.
Talked about the citizen-initiated.
No, we didn't talk, this is separate. This is exclusively. Of being able to reduce the.
On the swap, yeah.
To reduce the, I think that, you know, Mr. Murray, amongst others, brought up a fair amount of discussion about, hey, the criteria that you have for, you know, potentially taking property out of the development area.
Yeah.
And that's a swap.
That was a swap. So the swap, I remember. I remember the sweet spot conversation.
Okay.
This is different, if I understand it.
The citizen-initiated.
Which is, 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 it's a, it's not swapping with anything else. It's that, yeah, a citizen can initiate the, the changing of the development area. I want to, I have a piece of property here. I want to add that to the development area.
Or conversely, take one out. Yeah, so agreed. Agreed that, let me be clear. What we're talking about is a, is a procedure that we would create that would allow citizens to change the plan, but that would be something post-adoption. And the language that I'm talking about is something I would be bringing to you after the plan is adopted.
That's what I wanted to get clear, because that wasn't something that we voted on. It wasn't something that, that was in our conversations.
Nor has it been something that's been drafted yet.
Okay, so it's not being adopted?
No, it is not being adopted with the conference of plan.
That, that's the clarification that I was looking for.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just want to be, Mark Spaboda, Deputy Director, Community Development. Just want to be clear that this is only what we're talking about, developing the policy for, is the ability to ask to come before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to see if that is appropriate rather than wait, because if, if we're trying to be nimble and deal with market-driven situations, and it may or may not be acceptable, may or may not be what we wanted, similar to discussions you had tonight about the rezoning. Right, is just the ability to ask and not have to wait four or five years. That's all that it is.
And I understand that. I'm just trying to get the clarification of where is that in the process and is that being voted on tomorrow by the board?
It is not being voted on by the board.
No, no, it's what, what, it was what to Mr. Barnes' point is to what was in the plan, which is having, putting that in there as an option to develop a policy. We may go through that, as with other options within the comp plan that say, nope, but when we go to figure this out, it doesn't work. Or it does work, right? And what are the parameters for that? So that, part of that discussion and how we develop that policy is still to be determined along with other initiatives and goals that we have set within the plan.
It will still come through the planning commission. There will still be public, public hearings on it. There would.
There would be an ordinance revision, I believe, to make, to allow that, that to occur, right? So an ordinance revision comes before the planning commission and the board of supervisors. I'd have to look at how we do that under our current regulation, but I believe our regulation does not allow, right? The zoning ordinance does not allow, or the, there's not an ability to apply for that under any regulation that we have. So regulations that we adopt that come through the commission would follow that same path.
I didn't see anything in the summary of document changes from revised September 2025 that speaks to this, correct?
Correct, and I, I want to be clear, if I created a misconception or confusion, I apologize. Everything that we talked about is, these are these other stuff. This is a, the citizen-initiated thing, it will come back to you in several months. We, we, we'll develop a policy. It will happen outside the adoption of the plan.
And that's all I'm trying to clarify, because, I mean, you guys have probably seen some of the same comment or received comments, like, you know, we've seen, there's been emails, there's been a lot of confusion around this issue in the community. So I'm trying to help shed some light on it because we did not review that policy here. So what, there to be clarity on that.
But you will have an opportunity in the future.
That would be great.
So it's only the.
Forward to it.
It's only the idea of a policy. It's not the actual policy.
Thank you. Great. Any other updates on October 1st? That was helpful. So that document, by the way, that should review, that document of those changes is helpful to look at. And there's some there that were not made. Changes that were not made that are included in there, so you can see those.
Right.
Great, thank you. Uh, let's see, any new business, old business, or items for follow-up?
Can I just say, the handouts the lady left. She doesn't have enough for everybody. I'm going to scan it and I'll just email it to you all tomorrow. Is that okay?
That's great. Yep, that's much better. Thank you. All right, that was new business. Any old business or items for follow-up? All right, if not, we will adjourn to the Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you all.
Thank you.